I'd like to call to order the San Charles City Council meeting for Monday, June 16th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Weber.
Here.
Sokitis.
Here.
Folks.
Here.
Bongard.
Here.
Mung.
Here.
Gem.
Here.
Felman.
Here.
Petrola.
Whereby.
Here.
Bessner.
Here.
Okay, tonight, the invocation will be given by Alderman Gem.
Well, good evening, all. Gracious Lord, we thank you for the freedom we all share as we just celebrated our 249th anniversary of our nation's founding. We seek your guidance and discernment in our meeting this evening as issues are discussed and decisions are made that will impact our city's future, to be the best place to live, work, and to visit. Keep safe our police, fire, EMTs, and all first responders as they go about keeping our residents and visitors safe. Bless and guide our mayor, elected and appointed officials, city staff, and all city's employees as they strive to make St. Charles the best it can be. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance will now be started by Alderman Felman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there somebody named Bob Likings here? Bob could come up, please.
Well, I will tell you that I've been mayor for about 60 days now, and one of my favorite parts about it is what I, in my mind, call celebrating St. Charles. And so tonight, there's a couple different things we get to celebrate, and one is this gentleman right to my right. There is a proclamation that I'm going to read to you, and it'll be signed, and it reads as follows. Whereas Bob Likings is St. Charles native and 2020 graduate of St. Charles East High School, has excelled as a student athlete at the University of Wisconsin. And whereas Bob made history as the first University of Wisconsin athlete and only the fourth male in Big Ten history to win four individual conference titles in cross-country and helped lead the Badgers to five Big Ten team championships and a fourth-place finish at the 2024 NCAA Championships. And whereas he is a four-time First Team All-American, school record holder in the 5,000 meters, and ranks among the top five in school history in multiple distance events. And whereas Bob qualified and competed in the 2024 USA Olympic Trials in the Men's 5K, solidifying his place among the country's most accomplished track athletes. And whereas Bob has demonstrated, and this is just awesome, Bob has demonstrated academic excellence as a 2024 USDF CCCA Scholar Athlete and a seven-time Academic All-Big Ten Honor Reed. And whereas in recognition of his outstanding achievements in both academics and athletics, Bob was awarded the 2025 Big Ten Medal of Honor, the most prestigious award given by the conference, and if I have it right, to one male athlete and one female athlete at each Big Ten school. Whereas dedication, leadership, and excellence brings pride to both the University of Wisconsin and the St. Charles community, now therefore I, Clint Hall, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, proudly recognize these men, Bob Likings, for his exceptional accomplishments and extend our congratulations on receiving this esteemed honor. And with that, Bob, there's been a lot of athletes, a lot of medals that have gone around your, your, I'd like to think that this is one of the best. Before I, before I turn it over to Coach Bob and then Bob, there's just a couple more things I want to say. So, so one, you know, Bob, Bob had an incredible collegiate career, but we also know the best is yet to come. And I hope that when you're traveling across the world running, that you always remember all the miles you put in, and I'm looking at a lot of your teammates around here, all the miles you put around in St. Charles, on the path and your subdivision. I think one guy ran by me and I twirled around like I was in a... The other story I just want to share real quick before I turn it over to Bob is I was on the Athletic Booster Club, and, and I, I almost don't know if this is true, it seems like an urban myth, and I don't know if I made this up, but one of the, one of the parents from the Special Olympics, she had an athlete, she had a son who was a Special Olympic athlete, and she said, "I want to share with you something that happened in my family." And we, it's a booster club, and we said, "What happened?" She said, "My son received a package from the University of Wisconsin, from Bob Likings." And she said, "I was confused." She said, "In it was a swag bag full of Wisconsin paraphernalia with a note from Bob that said, 'Hey, I know what it's like to make it to state. I'm so proud of you. Keep rolling,'" something to that extent. Is that true? So, not only, not only an incredible athlete, but an incredible person. I'm going to turn it over to Coach Bob, who was his high school coach, and I know will always be a coach, but what I'll tell you is, for somebody who loves sports, I think of, you know, the gold standard in St. Charles running is Rick Woolhunter. When I think about the next step, I think of Bob Likings, I know we have Michael Wilson, we have a lot, a lot of people, we have Shield Meyer, now the names of, the names of the different athletes are incredible. We're so proud of Coach Bob, you're a huge part of that, so I'm going to get you up just to say a few words about Bob, and then we'll let Bob speak. So, thanks, Coach.
I don't, I don't need, when I'm a P teacher, at least, I can do that. So, thank you, guys. I'm Chris Bosz, I was Bob's high school coach, well, he was Eddie. I just want to say thank you. This is unbelievable. You had so many people come out to support and recognize Bob and all of his accomplishments. So I just want to say thank you, guys, all, for coming out. When I think of Bob, and Mr. Likings, he talked to me, came over and dropped off some info on tonight, and he asked if I could speak, and I said, "Absolutely." And if you know me, I can ramble, so I'm going to try to keep this short. There's a lot I want to talk about, Bob, but first, Mrs. Likings wanted me to mention that after, we have a gathering at Riverside. So, you're hungry, I'll keep this short, so we jump all the way over to Riverside, right? So, I talk, when I think of Bob Likings, there are three things that come to mind that have led him to success in high school and at the University of Wisconsin. And actually, I asked him about the first one. Today, we met at practice, he came to our cross-country summer camp, he ran with us, and when he was leaving, I was walking out with him, I asked him if I can mention the 2018 State Meet, and he said, "Yeah, it's been a long, it's been a long time. I think you can go ahead and mention that." So, the 2018 State Meet is, I think, something that sticks out to me when I think of him. His tremendous work ethic and dedication to the sport, and then finally, the ability to surround himself with like-minded people. I think those three things, he began and, and started out in St. Charles and continued on at the University of Wisconsin and kind of elevated those three aspects. So, that 2018, 2018 State Meet, I won't get into the specifics, but Bob was in Sweden with his outcome that day. And we had watched as another team held up a trophy that we thought should have been ours. And I made them say, "It makes you stay there and watch another team take that trophy." And they had the success, and they celebrated, and before we left the park on the bus, there was a commitment made, the team made a commitment, but it was really kind of led by Bob Likings. A switch was made. He was hardworking, but his hard work elevated. His dedication to all those little things that led him to be an exceptional athlete were elevating. We had a model for each other, okay, that was really kind of resonated in 19 and 20 and 21, for each other, compete for each other, not individually, but compete for each other. And that, that switch flipped in 2019, involved with Elbenton, not making sure that the 2018 was a distant memory. He was our number one runner in 19, led our team to state championship in 19. He earned All-State honors that, that day. He led our team to the regional, Nike, the Midwest Regional, where we qualified to Nike Nationals in Portland, Oregon, and the team finished fourth in the country that year. Bob was our number one runner there, he earned All-American honors that, that day. Bob also qualified for the Foot Locker National Cross-Country Meet, which is also much older than the Nike Nationals, it's an individual meet held out in San Diego, where he represented Illinois and St. Charles to the best of his ability. All of these accomplishments, when that switch was flipped, led the University of Wisconsin to take a chance on Bob Likings and the rest of history. So, that 2018, see, my, I'm a firm believer, things happen for a reason, and I'm convinced that if 2018 didn't happen, 2019 doesn't happen, and maybe he's not at the University of Wisconsin. So I, when I think of him, that is the number one thing that I think of when I think of Bob. The second thing is his work ethic. This kid is as skilled in the sport, he understands that distance running is not linear, okay, it's not always successful, okay, just like in life, ups and downs, peaks and valleys, and he understands that, yes, it is really awesome when things are going well, but when things are going, not going so well, how can we adapt and change so that we can learn from those mistakes? And I think he did a great job in high school at that and at the University of Wisconsin throughout his career. And finally, surrounding himself with like-minded people, people that want to accomplish good, good things, athletic, academic, right? My college coach said, "Surround yourself with what you want to become," right? If you want to be successful, surround yourself with successful people, not only in athletics, but in life, okay? We have that run for each other mentality, when he's hard-headed, you're hard-hearted, transferring over to Wisconsin, that's a team-first mentality, and he, it was like a smooth transition, okay, going from what I mean, our team in 19 and 20, to the five years that he was up in Wisconsin. So, everybody is, Bob, is super proud of you. Like Mayor Hall said, we cannot wait to see what the road lies ahead. I think you guys, I think you're ready for big things, so, you guys.
I, I do need a microphone for this. Yeah, thanks, everybody, for coming. It means a lot to me and my family that so many people came. If you came just for the city council meeting, I'm sorry, so many people came. But, yeah, I mean, in my five years at Wisconsin, it's just been so nice to know that so many people from the St. Charles community have always been at my support, and I know my family really appreciates it, my dad loved keeping everybody in touch and everything. I'm sure a lot of people in the room know that. So, yeah, I mean, I've loved being from St. Charles, I love running the path and everything. Yeah, I have a lot of pride in being here, being from here, so, thanks to everybody who's came, and thanks for putting this on, Mayor Hall, and, yeah, thank you.
So again, celebrating St. Charles, and Bob, we celebrate you not only as an athlete, but as a person, and again, when you're running around the world, just always remember, St. Charles. Next up, tonight, we're starting a new tradition with the very first Spirit of St. Charles Awards. Every month, we're going to recognize individuals, businesses, or organizations from one of the city's wards that will help make St. Charles a vibrant community. I, I want to just say for a second, the reason that these are so important to me is, when we talk about this, we talk about all the different issues that our, that our city, that our state, that our country are facing, but what's so important to me is to recognize all the great things that are happening in St. Charles. Bob Likings is one example, but there's a ton of other examples, and so, this awards program allows us to celebrate St. Charles and all the great things that are happening here. And so, I'm very appreciative of Alderman Sokitis and all the men, folks, who decided that they were going to take this on, they're going to celebrate Ward One, so I'm going to turn it over to you at this time.
Thanks.
Bob, here's your proclamation.
Thank you for sticking around. I know it's probably pretty easy for you guys just to jump ship at this point, but we really appreciate it here. Yes, Mayor Hall brought this idea to us about a month ago and asked if we'd be the first, myself and Alderman Sokitis, to lead this off. I have the honor tonight of presenting the youth that we are here to honor, and the youth that we're here to honor is a person named Nate Mullin. Nate, could you please come up here right now?
I, I have had the pleasure of knowing Nate for the past three years. He's a St. Charles East High School student, he'll be a senior this upcoming year. He is a, on the baseball team and as one of the baseball coaches. I'm very excited we have one more year with Nate Mullin. He is a two-year ARSC winner. This past year, to show that not only is he an outstanding athlete, he was also a member of the Academic All-Conference Team with a 3.62 GPA on a 4.0 scale, may be taking all AP classes at this time. He, yes, that deserves the round. Nate was also named Duquesne All-Conference Pitcher, First Team this year. With the school itself, he is involved with the Athletic Council run by our Athletic Director, Mr. Howard, but throughout the community, an exiled community member, despite, or not despite, and also with his academic success, with his athletic success, he is currently working toward his Eagle Scout, which if anybody has gone through that, we all know how difficult that really can be. So Nate, it is my pleasure, on behalf of the city of St. Charles, to thank you for being such a wonderful representation of youth in our commi, our community. And there's two things myself and Alderman Sokitis have for you tonight. One is a letter of recommendation that you can use for colleges moving forward on our behalf, on behalf of the city, and the Spirit of St. Charles Award for you, again, for being an outstanding youth, representing Ward One. Thank you.
Steve Martin, would you like to come up here, please?
Thank you, Steve, for being here tonight. Mark and I are honored to present the first Ward, Spirit of St. Charles Award, to Steve Martin. We rec, we want to recognize Steve for his dedication to St. Charles and for the volunteer work that he has given to help make St. Charles a vibrant and welcoming city that it is. Steve has been an asset to the community for many years. He's always there with a smile and a helping hand. Steve is a graduate of St. Charles High School, class of 1971. He and his wife Cindy, who's here tonight, raised her family here. Before he retired, he was a banker with the first state bank in St. Charles. Volunteering seems to come naturally to Steve. He has volunteered in time and towns, several civic organizations, and has served on many boards and committees in the community. For many years, Steve has, he has been the chief marshal of the holiday parades in St. Charles, including the Christmas parade, the Merle Day Parade, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade. The chief marshal works behind the scenes to make sure the parade runs very smoothly. So we want to thank Steve for his many years of service and for making a lasting and positive impact on the city of St. Charles. I'd like to present you with the plaque, the Spirit Award, Award One, for Steve Martin. Steve?
For sure.
I'd like to thank all of you for hanging around too, because I don't have anybody
except my wife here tonight. If you want to clap, that's fine, too. I'd like to thank the council for this recognition, and also thank you for your service to St. Charles. Additionally, I would like to give thanks to my parents, Jim and Rena Martin. They guided me down the path to community service, and also to my wife, who has walked beside me all these years as I've served the community, as a volunteer for many different things. And let me wrap it up with the final line from the J.C. Creed, "We believe that service to humanity is the best work of life." Thank you.
So last Spirit of the Word of tonight, Mayor Hall asked us to recognize a business corporation in Ward One, and myself and Alderman Sokitis, there was a, there was a large number for us to choose from, but the more the two of us talked, we really wanted to honor a corporation that had really been around St. Charles for a long time, that has done a lot for the community, threw a lot back and forth, and then Alderman Sokitis came a couple weeks ago, "Hey, what do you think about this corporation?" And when he said it, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, yes," for what they've done. And that corporation is the Duquesne Corporation here in St. Charles, run by Mr. Johnson. If you wouldn't mind joining us. If you could bear with the two of us, we're going to give you a little history here of the Duquesne Corporation, for those of you who might not know a lot about it. The Duquesne Corporation is located on Kirk Road. It's a global diversified manufacturing specializing in advanced plastic welding and assembly systems, as well as high-performance audiovisual equipment. The company serves a wide range of industries, including medical devices, automotive, food processing, packaging, and electronics. Founded in 1922 by J. McWilliams Stone, Jr., the company again is opera radio, producing radio equipment and audio systems. Their first location in St. Charles was at the Heinz Cut Glass Building at 13th and Illinois Avenue, which was also known later on as the Lamp Factory, which has now been rehabbed and is now apartments. So we're still keeping the original, the original location here. Later, they moved their operation to a building on Cedar Avenue and Main Street, right by the old railroad tracks on the north side. Another location was at Illinois and First Street, which is now where Timmers is located in that old building there. They moved to their current location on Kirk Road in 1970. When I was in grade school in St. Charles, I remember seeing the film strip projector having Duquesne logo on it. I also remember seeing the logo on the intercom speakers in every classroom. Duquesne supplied audio and visual systems in schools and businesses across the nation for many years. Duquesne has made significant contributions to American industry from showcasing innovations at the Chicago World Fair, to supplying naval and military communications and equipment during World War II, and partnering with NASA in the late 1960s to spec out underwater locating devices for commercial aircrafts. Today, Duquesne is widely recognized as a market leader in plastic bonding and welding technologies, offering cutting-edge systems such as ultrasonic, vibration, spin laser, infrared hot plate, and servo-driven welding. Headquartered in St. Charles, Duquesne operates a network of 20 locations worldwide, including offices and manufacturing facilities across the United States, Europe, and Asia. The St. Charles headquarters employs approximately 250 people. The St. Charles would like to recognize the Duquesne Corporation with a certificate recognizing them as an outstanding business in St. Charles, and more specifically, in Ward One of St. Charles. Congratulations on the spirit and award of St. Charles.
Thank you. Do you like to say a few words? Sure, thank you. So I can share, I didn't realize that two of our former employees came for this event tonight as well, Craig and Paul. Otherwise, otherwise, it would have just been myself and my wife. Anyway, thank you, City of St. Charles, appreciate it, being a long-standing member of the St. Charles community, it's been great to Duquesne, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, for the Bob Likings fans, this is your opportunity. Take care, Bob.
Mark, Ron.
Well done. Thank you.
How did you not mention the sign?
Well done.
Thank you.
Very well done.
I mean, I don't want to critique, but I mean, it's cool, Jerry.
Mark, what's his name?
Uh, Mike Johnson.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson. All right, we, we're all interested in who does your sign? Who does the sign? Who does the sign out in front?
He does great work.
Don't stop.
He's too much great.
Thank you, everybody, for that. I'm now going to turn it over to Alderman Sokitis, who will now present the omnibus items for vote.
Mr. Likings, make a motion to approve the omnibus vote as presented tonight. Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Mung.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Whereby.
Yes.
Bessner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. There is no old business, so I will now move on to new business, new business. A, under new business, a motion to approve a resolution declaring a vacancy in the office of the city clerk. Nancy Garrison has been serving as the interim city clerk following a vacancy in the Circuit Clerk's office. With the recruitment of the clerk now complete, the office of the clerk will transition accordingly. Ms. Garrison will vacate her interim role effective today, July 7th, to allow for the appointment of a newly selected city clerk. May I have a motion?
The most.
So, motion by?
Alderman Mung.
Yep, Mung.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gem. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Mung.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Felman.
Yes.
Whereby.
Yes.
Bessner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item B, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve the appointment of a city clerk. I am requesting favorable consideration to appoint Ms. Jessica Bridges, who is to my left and our right, as city clerk effective today's date. Ms. Bridges will serve in this capacity until a successor is elected and assumes office following the consolidative election of April 6th of 2027. This person brings a strong commitment to public service, organizational excellence, and the ability to manage the responsibilities set forth by the clerk's office. Her experience and qualifications make her an exceptional candidate to fulfill the duties of city clerk. I'd also like to just indicate for the record that once the vacancy was established, we put out and to all, everyone in the city, indicating we were looking for anybody that was interested. This was a position on which only one person ran. I think, Heather, how many did we have? We had 12 different people submit resumes and cover letters asking to be considered for this. We went through rounds of interviews, appreciate the HR department of the city, and then the different council members who participated. It was a very, it was an excellent opportunity to meet 12 wonderful candidates or to people that were interested, but ultimately, Jessica, you were the one that we believed was most qualified.
Yes.
Muntz.
Yes.
Gemm.
Yes.
Spellman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now on to item D, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve reappointments of members to various city boards and commissions for fiscal year 25 and 26. I request favorable consideration of the annual reappointments for the members of the city boards and commissions, whose current terms have expired for fiscal year 24 and 25. They are all listed. Do I need to read them by name, or is it okay just so? It's just going to be stated? We do have some members here. Susan Sanders is going to be reappointed to equate inclusion. We have Lauren Donalds, who's going to be reappointed to youth commission. Anybody else? Just so that everybody understands the process that was used. So as the new mayor, again, it was my responsibility to go through and to see what terms had expired. I called the different chairs of those different committees to ask for their input. They gave me that input. We looked at attendance records, we looked at whether they were contributing members, whether they wanted to be reappointed. So this is the initial list. There are still eight or nine vacancies that are left to be filled, and I'm going to be working with the different chairs of those committees to go ahead and do that. Could I have a motion at this time?
Muntz.
Second.
Muntz motion, Besner second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muntz.
Yes.
Gemm.
Yes.
Spellman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And again, Susan and Lauren, thank you very much for your continued service. Well done. All right, next up is item E, which is a presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve appointment of prosecuting attorney Timothy O'Neal for fiscal year 25 and 26. I am requesting favorable consideration to approve the reappointment of Mr. O'Neal of Foot, Milky, Chavez, and O'Neal LLC, Geneva, Illinois, as the prosecuting attorney for the City of Saint Charles on Liquor Control Commission for fiscal year 25-26. Could I have a motion, please?
So move.
Motion by Muntz.
Motion by Muntz, second by Werble. Any questions or comments? I will just indicate that I talked to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, about this appointment. Mr. O'Neal has served in this role for a number of years. He does a good job. Talked to the judge that he appears in front of, gave high recommendations, and so I think this is, again, a good appointment. Is there a motion? All right, I've already given the motion. Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muntz.
Yes.
Gemm.
Yes.
Spellman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now on to item D, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve the appointment of Robert Rooney to the Board of Fire and Police. I am requesting favorable consideration to appoint him to Board of Fire and Police with the term expiring on April 30th of 2028. For those that don't know, Rob, Rob, could you stand up, please? So this is Mr. Rooney. He was recommended and vetted by police and fire, and he is here today, and so could I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
So motion by Werble, second by Gemm. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muntz.
Yes.
Gemm.
Yes.
Spellman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Now on to item D, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve reappointments of members to various city boards and commissions for fiscal year 25 and 26. I request favorable consideration of the annual reappointments for the members of the city boards and commissions, whose current terms have expired for fiscal year 24 and 25. They are all listed. Do I need to read them by name, or is it okay just so? It's just going to be stated? We do have some members here. Susan Sanders is going to be reappointed to equate inclusion. We have Lauren Donalds, who's going to be reappointed to youth commission. Anybody else? Just so that everybody understands the process that was used. So as the new mayor, again, it was my responsibility to go through and to see what terms had expired. I called the different chairs of those different committees to ask for their input. They gave me that input. We looked at attendance records, we looked at whether they were contributing members, whether they wanted to be reappointed. So this is the initial list. There are still eight or nine vacancies that are left to be filled, and I'm going to be working with the different chairs of those committees to go ahead and do that. Could I have a motion at this time?
Muntz.
Second.
Muntz motion, Besner second. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muntz.
Yes.
Gemm.
Yes.
Spellman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
to approve appointment of prosecuting attorney Timothy O'Neill for fiscal year 25 and 26. I am requesting favorable consideration to approve the reappointment of Mr. O'Neill of Foot, Milky, Chavez, and O'Neill, LLC, Geneva, Illinois, as the prosecuting attorney for the City of St. Charles on liquor control commission for fiscal year 25-26. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion by Muns.
Motion by Muns, second by Werble. Any questions or comments? I will just indicate that I talked to our city administrator, Heather McGuire, about this appointment. Mr. O'Neill has served in this role for a number of years. He does a good job, talked to the judge that he appears in front of, gave high recommendations, and so I think this is, again, a good appointment. Is there a motion? I've already given the motion. Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muns.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Item F, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve reappointment of administrative hearing prosecutor Anne Marie Lamparello from Lamp Law LLC for fiscal year 25-26. I am requesting favorable consideration to approve the reappointment of her from Lamp LLC as the administrative hearing prosecutor for the City of St. Charles.
Motion by Muns.
Motion by Muns, second.
Second.
Second by Besner. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Besner? I'm sorry, Weber?
Yes.
Sokitis?
Yes.
Fokes?
Yes.
Bongard?
Yes.
Muns?
Yes.
Gem?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Petrilla?
Yes.
Werble?
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Item G, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve reappointment of lobbyist John Milner from John Milner and Associates for fiscal year 25-26. Is there a motion?
I have a question, actually.
Sure. You know what, I think we need a motion and a second.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Werble, second by Gem, Alderman Werble.
So, do we, what, Mr. Milner, what is he, does he come in here and present to us, or can you just...
He has not come in for a formal presentation. He does give us regular updates, and then is in contact with us for issues that are going on at the state level.
So, this is more in Springfield?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
I don't see a dollar amount. Does he do this pro bono?
They're at a dollar amount. So, he has a contract right now that just rolls over month to month until we terminate it, so this is for the technical reappointment. His contract is still in place, just rolling over month to month.
What is that dollar amount, month to month?
Still needs to rip the dollar amount off his pants. Twenty-four thousand a year.
For a year?
Per year.
Twenty-four thousand, not a month, for a year?
Correct. So, two thousand a month.
All right, any other questions or comments? I can tell you, when I went down to Springfield to visit IMEA, I did have a meeting with them down there, have received emails updating us on what's occurring in Springfield, and I also do know that he had said that any time that council members wanted him to appear, he'd be happy to do so. So, any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muns.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
All right, moving on to motion carries. Item H, presentation of a recommendation from myself to approve a reappointment of ethics advisor Kay Austin Zimmer from Delgado Law Group LLC for fiscal year 25-26. Is there a motion?
Motion by Muns.
Second.
Motion by Muns, second by Werble. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muns.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. On to item I, presentations of recommendations from myself to approve the appointment of city liaisons. A correction has been made in the packet, removing Ms. Spelman from the liquor control commission appointment. She was in the initial packet, and Ron Sokitis will be added to the Tri-City ambulance board. Going through, Alderman Bongard will serve as the commissioner to St. Charles Business Alliance, Alderman Gem on equating inclusion and liquor control, Alderman Werble for History Museum, Alderman Spelman Housing Commission, Alderman Petrilla Liquor Control Commission, and Tri-City Ambulance Board, Alderman Jamie Muns, the 708 Mental Health Board, Alderman Besner Natural Resource Commission, Alderman Fokes, Norris Culture Arts Center Board of Directors, Alderman Weber the TRICOM Board. Is there a motion? I'm sorry, but we get, we need a motion?
Move for approval.
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Second.
Spelman, second, and Werble, any questions or comments?
Sorry, I have a question.
Yeah.
What about the intergovernmental committee?
Uh, you know what, so, in looking through this, we had the intergovernmental, which Ms. Spelman agreed to be a part of. Are we going to have to, Heather, turn it over to you? Do we need to bring that up, since it's not part of it?
We have done those informally, not as official appointments previously, so we can handle it either way, but we can just move forward with it right now without the official appointment.
Okay, so we would include Ms. Spelman as the liaison for intergovernmental. All right, so we had the motion, the second. Any other questions or comments? What I would say is, I talked to all the different council members about the different appointments, and I appreciate your willingness to serve in the different capacities, and I know from talking to the different representatives, they're very happy to have you. So, roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muns.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
All right, next up, item J, motion to approve the postponement of the resolution approving a certificate of appropriateness for demolition of 217 Cedar Avenue from July 21st of 2025 to August 4th of 2025.
Move for approval.
Werble, second.
Okay, so we had the motion by Werble, second by Spelman.
Question.
Question. Are we on 5J or K?
5J.
I got K.
Yeah.
We got K.
I have J on mine, I must have picked up the wrong one.
So, K.
Okay.
I have...
Did I skip, did I skip something, then?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're on, just whatever the letter number, motion to approve the postponement of the resolution.
I do have a question. Why are we moving it back?
So, I will answer that. So, I am, so, it was originally set for July 21st. I am on vacation.
Okay.
And based upon the different discussions that we've had, I have talked to both the representatives from the church and representatives from the preservation groups, just because I think, based upon all the discussion, that I think it'd be appropriate for me to be here, and so I'm asking to push it back two weeks. I did ask both members if that would be okay, they indicated it would, and they are aware of that on August 4th.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I already did.
Yeah.
All right, so there was a motion, second, roll call.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Bongard.
Yes.
Muns.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Moving on to committee reports, starting with Alderman Weber. Is there anything from Government Operations Committee?
Yes, I have item A, too. I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance implementing a municipal grocery retailer's occupation tax and a municipal grocery service occupation tax.
Second.
Okay, there was a motion by Weber, second by Werble. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Weber.
Yes.
Sokitis.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Bongard.
No.
Muns.
Yes.
Gem.
Yes.
Spelman.
Yes.
Petrilla.
Yes.
Werble.
Yes.
Besner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Alderman Weber, anything else from Government Operations?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Okay, turning to Government Services, Alderman Bongard, is there anything from Government Service Committee?
Yes, Your Honor, I have two items, I have to read them in reverse, per the city attorney. So, we're going to read in item 5B, motion to approve a resolution waiving local bidding accepting the Illinois Department of Transportation bid results from the March 7th, 2025, letting an authorization, a construction contract with builders paving to be paid from local funds.
Second.
Okay, motion by Bongard, second by Werble. Questions or comments? Okay, Alderman Muns.
I have a couple of comments. So, in talking to a couple of state representatives, and someone from the King County Department of Transportation, it seems like there are opportunities still to speak with IDOT and to get more information on this before we move forward with using $550,000 worth of city funds, and I would like to pause on this. I don't think that I personally can get the votes to do that, but I don't feel like moving forward with this is the right thing to do today, without having more information, and I don't think we had enough time to do that. One of my other concerns is that, while I know that staff doesn't necessarily have access to get to other representatives, a lot of us do have those connections, and I'd like to see in the future for them to come and ask us for support and help in those situations, where we can reach out and ask for help from other elected representatives,